Can I call for a motion in a second to reconvene the public meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence on our servicemen and women?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visual and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the district clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Spencer? Mrs. Ayana Telly? Mrs. Di Lorenzo?
Present.
Mrs. Napolitan Alferno? Dr. Sennamore? Mrs. Mallon?
Present.
Mr. Murphy?
Present.
Mr. Cola Heefart?
Here.
Mrs. Poppy?
Present.
Thank you. Can I call for a motion in a second to approve the September nineteen twenty twenty-three Board of Ed minutes?
Motion.
All in favor? Aye. Motion in a second to approve the September twenty-eight twenty twenty-three Board of Ed meeting minutes. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Sennamore, would you, Dr. Sennamore, excuse me, would you like to introduce our guests today?
I am absolutely ecstatic to introduce some of our guests today. Obviously, we work in a very special place with lots of great people, of course, the most amazing kids on the planet. And it's, uh, it's moments like this, a couple moments, um, where we really get to highlight some, some, um, wonderful actions and truly going above and beyond, uh, the call of duty. You know, one of the hallmarks of Connect Quad is obviously the people that work within it. And, and tonight, um, we, we have this wonderful opportunity to celebrate, highlight, uh, three of our employees. They all happen to be teacher aides. We're very proud of all of our teacher aides, uh, in the district. And so what I'd like to do at this time, uh, we have two schools represented tonight, uh, based on these three employees. I'd like to start with, uh, with Basti Elementary School and invite up our principal, Ms. Kimball. If you could please join us, okay? Uh, Ms. Kimball, I think what would work nice, if you want to actually, uh, go to the mic and just give a real, real quick, robust and succinct synopsis of, uh, your two teacher aides and their extremely incredible Good Samaritan deed. And, and then invite them up and then myself and our board president, Ms. Mallon, will come up and present certificates.
Thank you. Um, yes, it's my honor to talk about the heroic efforts of the two teacher aides that were at Basti, um, a couple of weeks ago. One of our students was choking on a chicken nugget from home and his one-to-one aide, Ms. Lori Stroelwagen, called for assistance immediately. She recognized he was in trouble and our other aide, Mrs. Amy Loretta, came to his aide and provo- uh, administered the Heimlich maneuver, which dislodged the object from his throat. So I'm very proud of them. If they could come up?
We're coming, we're coming.
Thank you.
And now, I'd like to call up our principal from Sycamore Elementary School, Mr. Sheehan. And Mr. Sheehan, can you please give us a nice, robust and succinct overview of what your teacher aide did in her Good Samaritan effort?
So our teacher assistant was at, uh, cafeteria during lunch period, just watching her class. One of the students started choking. She immediately called for help, like, like just these teacher aides. She performed the Heimlich maneuver, got the Dorito out and made sure that the student went to the nurse and got checked out. So she jumped right into action and, you know, saved, um, the child's, uh, I guess, life, but, but she just jumped right in and, you know, and saved the day. So she's a hero for us and she's a great teacher assistant.
Sam Gallow. So again, on behalf of a grateful school district, obviously our Board of Education, myself, the administration, we once again congratulate our three fabulous teacher aides for their Good Samaritan efforts on behalf of our district. And this is really also, you know, is a point of emphasis because this district spends a lot of time on providing training on an annual basis in terms of, of various types of emergency response. So this is truly a, a celebration of all the things that we do great here and the great people that we have working on behalf of our children. So again, kudos.
I also just wanted to take a second and thank you all for your quick thinking and quick action. It truly did save children's lives that day. Um, and just going off of that, maybe it's something that this district could do is look to do CPR training for all aides in the district just so that everybody can recognize, be prepared, and be able to help any child, God forbid, the case come up.
It's funny you should say that. Because our, um, our head of security, Mr. Flynn, uh, is in the process of reaching out to our building principals to see all staff, any staff who may be interested, uh, willing to do the, uh, you know, faculty meeting role tour in the coming months.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn, because you're awesome. All right, now for the superintendent's update.
Thank you very much. So I have to start by thanking, uh, the community for supporting my very corny dad sense of humor, my monthly videos. Uh, I should warn you, it may get worse before it gets better. And, and the more that you, you know, get a kick and laugh at it, the more you encourage me to put more of that into my videos. But, uh, all kidding aside, I, I do, I do thank you very much and, uh, I hope you're, you're enjoying them. Um, we are in the process of working, uh, with our public relations company, Syntax, that we were here tonight taking wonderful pictures of our, of our teacher aides. Uh, we're in the process of putting up what, what we hope will be a good resource, uh, especially to our parents, certainly to students, uh, on our website and, and our social media. A kind of a, uh, a one-stop shopping reference sheet of what are the affiliated social media sites. We, we, you know, we think this will be a very helpful resource and obviously it's something that'll probably have to be updated over time. But you can look for that, um, in, in, in the coming days and we thank Syntax for their partnership on that. We've had a pull-up through our wonderful events over the last several weeks. Uh, Rockonco Middle School had their Honor Society induction, high school had their TRIEM Honor Society induction. We had a highly successful, what an incredible turnout at, at the Public Library for Community Wellness Day. Um, over, but around thirty tables, uh, three hundred-plus people was incredible turnout. Um, a very successful college career fair. This is something that we do every year in collaboration with our friendly neighbors in, in Saville. Kudos to our guidance department, uh, uh, for their efforts. Um, we've had various fundraisers, including, uh, Desi Strong and, and Kicks for Cancer. So we appreciate all of our, our staff, our coaches, uh, and our athletes, um, you know, for, they too going above and beyond to support, you know, our community and, and people in need. We have some upcoming ceremonies, uh, especially in terms of induction ceremonies. We, at OBMS, we have their TRIEM this Thursday. Uh, Rockonco Middle School, uh, has their TRIEM and the high school has their Honor Society induction later in the month. Please be sure to refer to the website, the calendar, because there's so many events with ten schools and we're really getting in that time of year now, um, you know, deep into, a little deeper into the fall, where there's going to be a lot of, a lot of events. Um, in terms of, uh, you know, the college career fair, I, I just want to touch base on that again. I believe we had about eighty colleges represented and that was really incredible. Great turnout in terms of our kids and our parents. Uh, I had an opportunity to visit and it was just nice to see, uh, Connect Quad there. And there, of course, was our PTSA, um, in, in the hallway. I hope this is not being recorded, but it looked like Saville High School was an extension of Connect Quad that night, but you didn't hear that from me. Um, so that was a great, great event. This Friday, at the secondary level, grade six through twelve, we have progress reports that are going to be posted. Uh, on October seventeenth at the high school, they have their Steer Straight Assembly and then follow, uh, later that evening, a parent workshop that focuses on, on drug and unhealthy decision-making prevention. Our fabulous high school marching band, um, which by the way, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, they did a beautiful job of honoring, uh, the victims in Farmingdale. Beautiful job by a marching band. They will be performing on, uh, October eighteenth at Mitchell Field at the Newsday Festival. Can't wait to see them in action. Our athletic teams continue to shine with several at the Varsity Level already sealing playoffs. Um, I'm looking forward personally to my first, uh, homecoming experience, which calls it Mother Nature, is now going to be, uh, on, uh, October twentieth. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate this time around. And obviously, homecoming is that special time when we welcome home alumni. Um, it's time for the entire community to come together, show that, you know, their pride and, and celebration and, uh, obviously, goatee birds. Uh, we have book fairs and pumpkin patches and trunk or treats, oh my! And of course, Save Halloween at the high school on Saturday, October twenty-eighth. And the week of October twenty-three is United We Stand Districtwide Drug Free Week. And as always, we thank all of our PTAs, PTSAs, SEPTA, ORBA, and Athletic Boosters for all that they do for our students and community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have student government in the house?
Oh, hi, I'm Elizabeth. I'm one of our student government, um, board representatives.
Hi, I'm Ava, another student gov Board of Ed rep.
So, um, student government recently held a poll for our homecoming dance. About one-third of the student body did not respond, but the people that did respond, about half wanted a homecoming dance. The date that was chosen was the day after the homecoming game, which is Saturday, the twenty-first. Their response was very good and the sale of tickets began today. If we do not sell enough tickets, we will have to cancel and issue refunds.
How many tickets do you need to sell?
Um, I believe the number was around one-twenty, in order for everything to make sense profit-wise. Homecoming was moved to the week of the twentieth. The Piscuitellis previously sent, previously sent out emails to the board welcoming homecoming. Um, they said especially that still stands and please email her about attendance and anything that could be done. And Mr. Moran is our grand marshal of the year.
So included in our new, um, homecoming date, we'll also be having another spirit week. And one of the days includes a Wear Pink Day for breast cancer awareness.
Um, tomorrow, Anti-Bullying Club will be setting up a table in front of the ninth grade office to sell cool bracelets in honor of Coming Out Day. And each grade is advised and encouraged to wear a different color assigned to support different colors of the LGBTQ flag.
Um, so as you know, with clubs starting up for the new school year, many honor societies have already had their inductions, as well as inductions coming up, and we congratulate them for those.
Um, Thunder Vision is picking up and releasing new episodes to the student body, so that is something we are all looking forward to.
Um, student government's Save Halloween is Saturday, October twenty-eighth from twelve to two. It's five dollars for child and non-perishable items will be collected for the food drive.
Anti-Bullying Club is hosting a social hour, October twenty-fifth, welcoming all students, including freshmen.
And last but not least, um, tomorrow, Connect Quad High School's first-ever ping-pong tournament will be held. Very exciting stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up is Board of Ed topics, um, starting with BOSI's hardships. So a few weeks ago, or maybe it was last week, I saw on social media a request for a student that was in BOSI's and was having a hard time getting the kid for one of her classes. And in true community fashion, the community came together and was able to supply this student with a kid for her. However, I was wondering if there's anything the district can do to help any hardship cases in BOSI's. I know that we, as a district, help hardships throughout all the grades, as far as getting them yearbooks, helping them go on field trips, or whatever it is. So I was wondering if there's anything that the board or the district can do to help a BOSI's hardship student.
Thank you. So, uh, we have started to look at this and we're just getting some guidance, you know, in terms of, uh, auditing and fiscal practice. Um, we also looked at, you know, various BOSI's programs to try to get an understanding of, you know, the different types of programs and what some of the potential out of student, uh, out of student and their family pocket expenses might be. And they do vary. Um, some of them can be quite substantial, you know, there's, uh, you know, uh, I noticed, obviously, this, this particular one, double cosmetology, and that, and that kit is, uh, pretty pricey. Um, I know there's some aerospace ones that are almost double that expense. So there are, you know, when you, when you talk of anything that's fiscal, you always got to look at the fiscal equity component. So, uh, you know, Mr. Hauser is exploring that.
Can I, uh, jump on the back of that? So when you had emailed about BOSI's hardships, I didn't know what it was even about because there was no email attached to it.
Oh, yeah, I didn't clarify.
Yeah, so what happened was, I guess, the same day or next day, I, I had emailed about students' funding. And mine was a little different from the same exact post. But what I wanted to know was, what about the students also that may not even have it? Maybe their families aren't financially as strapped as the ones who are, but it's still a big cost. Um, is, and they're too embarrassed to come forward to say anything. Uh, I was thinking, is there a way for us to, this year, on the board's wish list, for us to actually advocate to move some money into a line to help these children in BOSI's? Whether it's a hundred dollars a student, two hundred dollars a student, is there some way that we can help them? Also, it would, it would also encourage some students who maybe don't go into these BOSI's programs because they know right off the bat, they can't afford that. And then, if there's more need to cover it all together, we should be looking into it like we do at the lunch program. So if a student is getting money from the government, there are grants that we can look into as well, I was told. But I was told that we could do something like that, where the board does give a wish list each year for those who are new here. We, we do get to, to pick items and we can let, um, Mrs. Poppy know. And a lot of times, we never have chosen BOSI's. It's almost like the place where most people don't really think about. Last year, I wanted them to wear their, their, um, their cords that they, they, and, and when I was told that they were never advocated to be worn before, I thought that was terrible. So I don't understand why, if we're helping kids in programs in our schools, why we're not helping the ones who are doing these programs out in BOSI's? And in doing so, why can't we allocate the money to help them so that all students benefit from it? And those that have more financial need, use it like we do with lunch. If we already know that they're on that kind of level or where it is, where we, where they're already getting funding, we should be working with those families to make sure that if a kid wants to go into it, whether it's cosmetology, aeronautical engineering, I don't care what it is, we should make sure that we help that kid.
Hundred percent, I hundred percent support that.
So in terms of looking to cover total expenses, then that's obviously a budgetary consideration, likely in the tens of thousands, but then...
I don't, I don't think Jackie said total expenses. She was saying like, allocate a certain amount per student in those programs.
To help boost people wanting to do it. Because I'm, I'm sure there are students, I don't even have to ask, I'm sure there are students whose families were like, you know what, this would be a great program, but you know what? I just can't swing five or six hundred dollars extra in, let's just, and I'm just using like tenth or eleventh grade, eleventh grade. Maybe I'm buy, I, I gotta buy you a ring this year. Oh, maybe I can't afford that. I gotta buy, uh, uh, junior prom. Now, we're doing, which I, I love the idea of the homecoming dance, I love it. But I'm just saying, all these things cost money. Dresses cost money, suits cost money, outfits cost money, tickets cost money, everything costs money. So why are we saying to students who go into BOSI's, well, you go into BOSI's, have a, have a great time, but if you're a kid in the high school, I'm just using high school, if, if they're a kid in the high school in center eleventh grade and there's a program that a kid can't, a trip, a kid cannot go on, we make sure that we give money to help them get on that trip. Why are we not helping them get on the BOSI's?
We can try to help these students that want to do these programs, but just don't have the financial means to do it.
But that's why I'm saying, the board has the means. We have the ability to advocate for us to do these kind of things and financially make it happen.
Right.
That's what we need to do.
All right, so I'm, I'm hearing a couple things. So, as I said in the beginning, we're looking into the hardship component, because you do have to make sure that you have a, a process in place in terms of fiscal equity. But then maybe I'm also hearing that regardless of the cost and the, the out-of-pocket cost in a specific program, maybe we budget across the board where, you know, the district will look to, you know, I'm arbitrarily pulling out a number, you know, cover twenty percent across the board. And then that, that reduces the cost for everybody and then look at the hardship piece from there. So, so maybe there's a couple different things. So we'll, we'll explore both.
I like it. Perfect, thank you. Community Wellness Day, Ms. Di Lorenzo.
I thank you, Dr. Sennamore, for mentioning it in your updates. Um, it, it definitely was an incredible day. Um, I want to just personally, uh, thank, um, Mr. Pisani for, for leading the charge with that. And, and our committee was absolutely wonderful. We had, um, a few social workers on there, another parent, and two teachers. The, the two freshman awareness teachers were right there with us, planning and helping us. And of course, a huge thank you to the library for, uh, giving us that space. We were really scattered throughout the entire building and it was, it was incredible. We had vendors that were, from sports to, to different, um, like, uh, Dragon Gate was there, Kid Strong, we had Northwell Health, we even had, uh, Shed the Meds. The police were there, the fire department was there, Es slice of Nutrition, SEPTA had a table, Pure Momography, you can, you can book, book that for yourself. It was really incredible, an incredible event, and, and I want to, I want to thank the community for, for supporting that, the, the school district, as well as the public library. I want to thank them both for supporting this incredible event and I'm hoping we can do it again. We did have with our vendors, with the vendors, it was over four hundred people, so it was a really wonderful day. I just want to give a shout-out to everybody that, that helped out with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, transportation safety, Ms. Napolitan Alferno.
I have requested that we look into a change of policy, also, we have no policy, pretty much, uh, to make sure that our students are making it home. I understand that there would be a burden on some, we would have to make sure, there's a, there's a lot of paperwork involved. And also, bus drivers would need to know a lot more than, than we do right now in regards to who's getting them off the bus. But I do think that we should really look into having it where it's the parental choice. They say whether the kid can get off the bus or not. I mean, we're having some issues where kids are getting off the bus at a bus stop after what their bus is. That one lady who spoke at, at here, I also spoke to, I also followed up with that person, um, in regards. And I am one hundred percent on board with making sure. I mean, second grade is still too, too young, it's too young. With what's going on in the world today, we have to be a little bit more proactive, um, to say that, you know, kids are safe, we're all safe. That's a great, that's a great thing, except we're also asking for safety and security and more security. We're being quite, we're actually being questioned for more security at all these different events. At, when we were at the last meeting and we were told that we want more security at even elementary school fun days or carnivals or all these things. So if we want them there, but we don't care about if a kid gets off the bus, that is, six or seven years old, by themselves, walking home, doesn't know where they're going, I have a real problem with that. I want to make sure that these kids all make it home safe.
I, I fully support a policy where we have a parental form to fill out for K through five, for sure.
Yeah, I support that as well, especially as a parent of a second grader and a fifth grader. I mean, my fifth grader, I, I don't let him get off the bus alone. I'm, you know, so I, I absolutely agree completely that we need to, we need to work on something like that to keep these kids better protected.
So we hear you and, uh, obviously, you know, this was brought up at a prior meeting, um, you know, with the, the Guardian, who... And obviously, you know, this was brought up at a prior meeting, you know, with the Guardian who, who spoke. So Mr. Hauser, our, our business official, who also oversees transportation as well as our transportation supervisor, they, they immediately started to look at this. They are currently getting some input from building principals. And there is a, an established transportation committee that I believe is meeting next week. And they're charged with looking at this and trying to bring a recommendation forward in terms of, you know, what grade, you know, it sounds like second grade is a, it made big focus, but obviously we have several other grades at the elementary level. And looking at some of the logistics in terms of how many kids might come back, things of that nature. That's why the feedback from the elementary principals is also important. So we absolutely heard our community and the board, and this is in process.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Island Hill Zone Change, Ms. DiLorenzo.
Thank you. And I just want to jump back real quick to Community Wellness Day because I, I leave people out that I don't want to leave out. Dr. Pincus, I want to thank, also just quickly thank her for being there to do a presentation. And of course, the kids. We had a lot of kids from the high school volunteer, from the civics, and they were, they were incredible. So thank you, if you're all listening, thank you very much. Now, back to the Island Hills, we had gone, was it last week? I forget what date it was. We had gone to, with Dr. Centimore to a meeting, we, with the Reckler. I don't know if anybody is familiar with the Island Hills Zone Change. It's been going on for a number of years, where they want to build, years ago, it was over 1,300 units in a, an area that really is not made for that. The area is actually currently zoned for, I believe it was, maybe it's 90 homes, one, one acre plots. And in fact, if they wanted to make that, which we traditionally, we typically have in this area half acre plots, even if they wanted to change that to 180 homes on half acre plots, that requires a zone change. But what we learned at that meeting is they're not even looking to do that. They, a number of years ago, I think it was, I want to say December of 2020, I could be wrong with the year, but I think it was that year that Town of Islip, there was a huge outpouring of, of people to support the Greater Islip Association, to go against this zone change. And they heard, they heard everybody, but they came back with a new proposal. The new proposal is about 925 units, I believe that was the, the number, right? And while they're not six stories high, some of them are still three stories high. And when you look at the actual layout, they're, they're kind of on top of each other, these units. And, you know, there's concerns. My concern that I had asked about was sewage, more people, produces more waste. Where does that go? They mentioned having a water treatment plant within there. I don't want to be over there breathing that in. But that traffic, huge concern, Lakeland is already, I'm sure we all know. Yeah, so, and, and Jackie brought up those concerns, like, we all brought up these concerns. So what I wanted to do, a few years ago, the previous board had wrote a letter to support the Greater Islip Association. They wrote the letter to the Town of Islip saying, we do not want a zone change. We, we support them, we want to go against it. So I, I am asking, we had, Jesse had forwarded the whole board the previous letter, so they were able to, to read it, I hope everybody got a chance to see it. And we, I would like to do that again, to write another letter from the district in support of the Greater Islip Association and their tremendous, tremendous efforts that they are doing for our community. This absolutely affects Connect Quat, these students, I believe, will go to Bostie. So it is a huge impact on our district. We're already stressed with low food service workers, low transportation workers. It would be very hard on our community. It would also put a strain on our first responders. They're going to be stretched thin. So I, I'm asking for support from the board to, to have a letter written.
So I want to just piggyback with you. Well, when we were there, what we found interesting and the reason it ties into school is because when we asked them what the difference was, they told us that the difference was the amount of, they showed us a picture and said, this is the difference. I snapped a picture of that picture. When I went home, I did research because I knew that something didn't sound right. I said it to you, it didn't seem right. And what do you know? I go home and the picture that I snapped looks almost identical to the picture that about a year or two ago, I was at the Town of Islip and I watched all these parents from Connect Quat get up there and speak, and some from Seville as well, against it. And that, that same picture that I had just had showing me the new picture is actually very much like the old picture with a couple of extra trees in the pictures. So I understand that some people think that, you know, people don't do their homework, but I'm here at Salomon, I do my homework, and I would never support that, what they were doing.
I agree, writing a letter.
And not just the, not just the traffic. We asked how many kids were going to be added to the school and how many, how many issues we were going to have with, do you know, when we were asking them how many children you think? And they said, oh, it's going to probably be a lot of senior citizens. Then we asked how many cars were going to be on the road and parking and they, the things they were telling us, nothing made any sense. And it just screamed more traffic all over the place. And we already have a hard time getting up and down Seventh Avenue. We have a hard time getting up and down Lakeland, Ocean, it would just be a mess.
I fully support the letter. I've been following this from the beginning and I definitely don't want this in my backyard. So 100% support the board sending a letter. I also support the, the board sending a letter for this, 100%.
Thank you.
Okay, conduct at sporting events, Ms. Napolitano.
I brought it up last year, I'm going to bring it up again. I've been going to a bunch of sporting events. I brought it to the superintendent's. I brought it to his attention, I brought it to the athletic director's attention. I think it's wonderful that so many people come out and are spectators. I just wish that more people would speak to our children, all children, and we, we make it known. And it's not just the kids, I have to tell you. There, there are some issues too with us as adults when we're at sporting events. I understand people get upset, get angry. I'm not even talking about the parents that get upset and may have to get ejected from a game. I'm talking about the, the young people that are chanting things that are inappropriate. I, I cannot stress enough, I was watching the news two days after I sent the email to the board and the super, and there are other school districts that are having major, major issues. They had administrators move, they had people, just so many things happen because of the conduct at sporting events. Please, I can't stress it enough, have fun, cheer for Connect Quat, we're all T-birds. I'm an alumni, I love this district, but we have to make sure we keep it as positive as, as positive as possible and do not, under any circumstances, say things that if we said them anywhere else in the world, we could get ourselves in major trouble. Please, I'm begging you for this because I, I watched what's going on at Port Washington and Riverhead and in many other areas. We, Connect Quat, we're good. We need to just make sure when we go to these kind of events, especially with homecoming coming up, let's cheer for our guys, let's let them know, but let's keep it as positive as possible, please.
So I 100% agree with what you're saying. And just so the community is aware, it's been such an issue throughout the districts that Section 11 had to change their rules and their policies regarding sportsmanship and spectators at these sporting events. If you are caught being rude and obnoxious and you are thrown out, you are prohibited from going to future sporting events. And this is a Section 11 rule, this is not a Connect Quat rule, it's not a Riverhead rule. But it is an issue ongoing throughout the county right now. And like Jackie says, just go and support your athlete or support your district, your school, but do it in a positive manner.
And I also want to thank, you know, our security department and administration because, you know, I like to, to be reflective in our practices. And so, you know, we've been able to have actually several meetings already this year to kind of look at things and, and see where we want to tweak and really have a nice collaborative, you know, looking at it from all different perspectives. And so I appreciate, you know, our security being on top of that.
Our security was amazing at the first football game. You guys were awesome. And everything that was going on at a dark, it's, these things are very hard, especially, I say football because it's Friday nights, it's dark, it's late. And there's some, sometimes it's almost like when I went to one of the hockey games and I was like, oh my God, I can't believe how, how cheery it is, very excitable. But I wanted to say thank you because the guys, they do a great job, guys and girls.
Yes, thank you. Again, because you're amazing. Okay, moving, moving on. BOE Letter to Advocate for Lunch Program, Ms. Napolitano for a note.
Okay, so I had a parent reach out to me, not just a parent, many parents. I sent a few emails to the board. Parents, which I, I got some positive feedback, that they're saying that the food actually tastes better. That's what the, so that's why I was like, ooh, send this to the, so they actually are saying that they, they like some of the food choices better, but that these kids are still hungry. I cannot understand for the life of me, and I understand that people believe in this, you know, portion sizes, and I get that. But there has got to be a difference between when you give, and I know I'm going to be made fun of for this, but I don't care, three French toast sticks to a kindergartner, and now you, and a kindergartner who may be, and I'm just saying like 30 pounds, 40 pounds, I don't know what, you know, to a high school six foot six, 200 pound kid. I, I, I'm sorry, that's a grown man. You're giving a grown man three French toast sticks. What are we doing here? And, and I'm being told that this is the state, the government. So I'm requesting that we, we, the board, advocate as a team to the state and say, you know what, tell me how this is appropriate. I don't, I actually spoke to nutritionalists who told me this is not appropriate. You are actually not feeding a person's energy for what they, what you're giving them. A portion size is not meant the same for everyone. It's meant, that's why you don't give a baby, you give a baby baby food and you give an 18-year-old, you know, a burger. I, I don't know, like, this is just insanity. I can't believe what, what I'm hearing, that, and again, last year was a problem too. Marisol brought it up last year. So this isn't like, oh, we switched to a new company, so it's less food. No, it's been less food for a few years because of, and I'm not going to go political, but because of the people in, in nationwide saying that this is how we were going to fight, whether it was obesity or it was going to be, so now we're starving children. Not the way to go. I want to make sure that when a kid leaves lunch, they're at least satisfied, they're energized and ready for their next class.
Hundred percent. So this has been an item of contention for me since I've gotten on the board. I never quite understood how a kindergartner and a 17-year-old get the same amount of food. So I 100% support writing a letter to the state, asking them to at least revisit portion sizes depending on age of the child, at the very least.
I, I totally agree with that. You can't give them, even the difference between a kindergartner and a fifth grader. They, they just, they just eat different. So I absolutely support sending a letter as well.
There was a letter provided to you guys too that was drafted by Mrs. Inzurillo. So if you guys want to take a look at that, provide any feedback and we can add it to the next upcoming agenda.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Surveys, Ms. DiLorenzo.
Okay, I wanted to bring up some, some surveys that were brought up during the, the Mental Health Committee, which is, it really is a fantastic committee. We have some amazing people on there. And one of them is, is a Prevention Needs Assessment Survey. It's a, it's a very large survey, I think it's 124 questions. And while I, I, of course, we want to make sure that we know, we want to be able to help students. We want to be able to help them if they are using any substances, if we're finding antisocial behavior where their issues are because mental health is a huge issue, we need to address it. So I, I completely understand that. I just, and I, I'm going to, Jesse's going to actually make copies of this for the whole board so you could see it. But I just wanted to bring this up, that it's a very, it's a rather intense survey. And my concerns, of course, are also that it could be given during academic periods where, you know, I'm all about the academics, we, we take away academic time. And also, just some of these things, I, I, the survey was originally to be given to sixth grade, eighth grade, 12th, 10th and 12th. I know, I believe it was pulled from being given to sixth grade, which I, I can't see a sixth grader answering over 100 questions on this. They don't even know how to read half the stuff on it. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that the survey is here and just, just to get some feedback on it from, from anybody here.
So the question I have is, you were saying that it's not for every sixth grader, it's just for certain classes? I don't understand that part.
That's actually the next survey. This particular one is for all of them. Yeah, there's two of them. This one is for all sixth, well, they pulled it from being for sixth grade, but for all eighth grade, all 10th and all 12th graders are set to be taking this. So that's the one. The other one is one, and I, I do want to thank the principal for bringing this forward, you know, to letting us know at the Mental Health Advisory Committee Council Meeting. It's a tobacco survey, this is another one. And this is 84 questions, just basically about tobacco. But this one was given to us by the Department of Health. And I, you know, the Department of Health is, really don't have jurisdiction over us and just say, here, do this. You know, that's, that's a whole other situation. But again, this is a survey with 84 questions, a lot of questions. And this one is set to go to, as you're saying, just to, to sixth grade classes, one 7th and two 8th grade classes. So my concerns about that too are the parents, oh, my kid got it, why didn't, why didn't yours? And now we have, or why did my kid get it and yours didn't? And the kids that are getting it, again, losing academic time. And it's, I, I just have concerns about this survey. And I know that they said that, you know, giving this out, it does help us because we can get grant money for it. My concerns about that is, there's a lot of stipulations when you do accept a grant. You have to, you know, there's, there's a fine print that you must continue to do in order to keep that money. And I really, and I understand the need for, for learning this so that we can help our students. But like everything that I always look for, I, I would rather see, and we do have fantastic social work team here, we have, that they know they're the experts. Let them come up with something that is tailored for Connect Quat, maybe a lot less questions so that the kids are, you know, if the 10 questions, like, I'm not answering this. So, you know, something that is just going to be easier for them to answer and we can really take that information and keep it here. And not as this one from the Department of Health and send that out to the state. You know, it's just, I want to keep it more in-house. So I'm, I'm, I am going to make copies of this for, for the whole board. Jesse's, you know, going to be gracious enough to do that for me. And I, thank you for that, so that everybody can have copies of this. So those were two surveys. And the other thing that I wanted to actually bring up was something a little bit different.
Before you go on though, I just want to try to understand how these classes were arbitrarily chosen. So if somebody can find out why or how those classes were, do you know the answer, Ms. Poppy?
The first survey is one that, my understanding is we have given historically in the districts. But the last time that it was given was 2018. So our database is five years old. And there's a thought there that it would be useful for us to have updated responses and updated and current information. In terms of the placement of the grades, the chosen grades for that survey, I'm, I'm not sure how they're selected.
Not so much the grades, but the particular classes within the grades for the tobacco survey.
The tobacco survey I'm not as familiar with, but I can do some investigatory work. Unless Dr. Centimore knows more about it.
Yeah, I believe the Department of Health requested a random sampling. So there was no identification of, of students in terms of the makeup of rosters. So I'm not sure if, if the school gave them some indicator of, you know, XYZ classes in grade six, seven, eight, and they did the random sampling, or if it was done at OBS, but it was intentional to be a random sampling.
Got it, thank you. Sorry, Jackie.
That's okay. Yeah, the last thing that I wanted to, to bring up, and, but before I actually get into this, I want to preface this before things get twisted and skewed to fit a totally different narrative other than the absolute truth, is that topics such as racism and discrimination are absolutely taught in school. We always learn about that, children learn about that from elementary school. And they learn about it as, as an age-appropriate level with age-appropriate materials and content that suits their ability to understand. So with that being said, there was a, a survey given, more of like a survey slash test because it kind of had elements of both, and it was given in an AP class. And the survey, anybody that is actually, you know, I mean, I've been speaking for many years at the podium against things like critical race theory. This survey, and everybody has their own opinions and I fully respect that. But this survey comes from Harvard University, from a 501(c)(3) organization called Project Implicit. Kind of meant to determine somebody's implicit bias, the unconscious mind. And as soon as you hear that, that, that essentially is critical race theory. While it's not a course, that I have stated multiple times, it is a pedagogy, it's a lens, it's a way to teach. And it is, it is a thought process that people are just born racist. Whether or not you believe that, absolutely, you have a right to believe in that. But that's content that is typically meant for the college level, because they are more mature to understand the material. It's not usually brought down to the lower levels. That being said, in my opinion, that this survey was very much critical race theory. And I'm going to go into exactly how this test was given. So it was done on the computer, and it was a series of questions. And you go in, and if I, I'm gonna try to do my best to explain this without having a visual. Students were given images of people. And sometimes the test had changed a few times. Sometimes it said, you're gonna, the different, the different images were either.
Well, I know you took it, you took it several times.
Yes, I did. They were, um, European Americans, or African Americans, or it said white people or black people. And it would tell you, you had to have a keyboard, you have to hit E or I. Hit E every time you see the image of an African American, hit I every time you see the image of a European American. Categorizing, okay. The next set did words instead. It said, now, we're gonna do bad words and good words. Bad words such as humiliation and hate, good words such as joy, and, and you had to categorize those using the same exact keys, E and I. So students are doing this, mind you, throughout the entire test, this is the part that's more like a test, tells you go as fast as you can. So I imagine students to pict- picture the image pops up, E, I, E, I, they're going back and forth, categorizing. The next two sets alternated between images and words. And for most, most of the times that I had gone through this, it had the images of the, um, African Americans, the same key you used for them, you had to use to categorize the bad words. The same key on the keyboard you had to use to categorize the European Americans were the good words. So again, these things are popping up on the screen, and the kids are going back and forth. Okay, that categorizes there, they go through it. Test switches after that. Now we're gonna change the labels. So now you are putting the black people in with the good words, and the white people in with the bad words. Okay, go as fast as you can. So now the kids are doing this, human nature, you make mistakes, because you have to retrain your mind. I mean, I would imagine if every single one of us left here tonight and had to drive with their left foot, we probably wouldn't make it out of here, because that's just human nature, you have to retrain your brain. So they go through this, after they do this, questions pop up. This is the part that's like a survey. How comfortable are you around African Americans? Child has to answer that. How comfortable are you around European Americans? Child answers that. Okay, so now, what is your gender? What is your race? What is your political affiliation? What is your, uh, religion? And then the test tells you, when you're all done, you are faster at sorting black people with bad words than you are white people with good words. And what is a child to think after that? They are left feeling pretty bad about themselves, I would imagine, because ultimately, they're being told that they are, this is how they are thinking, yet they just couldn't retrain their mind to hit the right keys. So besides the fact that that is also indicative of CRT, the test is severely flawed and, and, and faulty, uh, it's, there's so much wrong with this test. That alone should have just, there was no reason to use it. Now, I do have to ask, um, before I, I mention the last part, Ms. Poppy, was this survey approved by the AP College Board for this particular class?
The survey itself, that you just described, is not part of the approval process for this particular class.
Okay, thank you.
So it wasn't vetted, in other words, it wasn't vetted by the AP Governing Board?
Not by the College Board, that's correct.
Thank you. So it's not gonna be on the AP exam, correct?
The survey itself will not be on the AP exam.
Thank you, thank you. Um, okay, perhaps the last thing, I mean, if those two things weren't enough, because I, I understand the critical race theory is a huge debate. People say, no, it's not, and they use it for that, but the fact that it was so severely flawed and didn't measure what it claims to measure. But this last part is, for me, the most alarming part about it, is that right before you start, it states, you must be eighteen or older to take this exam. So naturally, the very first question that comes up is, what is your birth month? Next question, what is your birth year? We're in October right now, before the, before even the cutoff date. So most students, I might even go out on a limb and say, probably every student in that class is under eighteen. If you put in a birth year that makes you under eighteen, you're no longer, you cannot proceed. So the students were directed to lie about their birth year, to make themselves older, in order to take this test. So my last question, my last question for Ms. Poppy is, is this acceptable in a class? And then I have a question for you, Mrs. Spencer. Is this acceptable for a teacher to ask students to lie about their age in order to take, to do some kind of tool, use a tool in their class?
So we have found it to be problematic, that the survey was intended for people who are eighteen or older, and was presented to students who are younger than eighteen. And, um.
So how did they take it if they're under eighteen?
There's a gateway to enter the survey wherein a student or the survey taker has to manually enter their date of birth.
So an adult person in our district told students they should lie about their age? That's what I'm being told.
I have to ask, um, my last question about this is to, to you, Mrs. Spencer, is, um, the fact that students had to falsify a document, I mean, violation of HIPAA privacy rights, do we have a legal situation on our hands?
I mean, it's all gonna come down to what kind of survey you're, you're filling out, and to whom it's being submitted, and whether or not it's an official document. Like, we're not really talking about a violation of the law here, right? Um, as much as we're talking about kind of a pedagogy thing. Yeah, so, um, the issue, I think, is more internal and employee-related in terms of having students falsify, you know, their age for purposes of taking a survey.
A survey that's not on the test, a survey that is not part of the governing AP Board.
Right, so just kind of to depart from that, I, I would almost guarantee that not everything that's taught in a class is gonna be on the final exam or the AP test. So I don't, I don't think that's kind of the road to go down, as much as, you know, the issue with advising students to falsify a record. But I think there's a caveat there, right? And that caveat is what the purpose is of the survey, right? So it's not a test, it's a survey. So, uh, uh, the perfect example of that would be for students who are given an aptitude test or a cognitive test, right? Sometimes those tests are given just to collect data on a student, right? We're not necessarily following all the rules in the examination booklet. Um, but they're, they're done, or they're conducted just to collect data. So I'd be curious to know, as, as a district, what was the purpose of, of delivering that survey to the students before we, um, really cast judgment or look at, you know, what was, why did we have this teacher telling, or whoever it was, telling students to falsify their age?
Well, here's another one. I was asked, is it technically, it's, it says, it is technically medically questionable to ask a person for their pronouns because gender dysphoria is a medical condition. Asking that question violated HIPAA. Under federal law, parents have a right to out their children out of participation in most school surveys. The Pupil Protection Rights Amendment, referred to as the P P R A, guarantees parents the right to review surveys before they are administered to students, and to out their children out of taking them as well. The P P R A also requires that schools notify parents of surveys and pro- pr- provide a mechanism for parents to opt out. Many schools fail to follow that law, apparently ConnectQuot's one of them, and often don't even know what is required of them under federal law. And if they do properly notify parents, it is usually only a day or two before the survey is to be administered, leaving very little time for them to take action, to actually look into this survey, to give transparency to parents and students, and to allow them to make an educated decision for their student and themselves. My biggest problem here is that when we, when we find this out, right? Jackie hears about it, I hear about it, we, we find this out, we bring it to the, to this, to the superintendent, we speak to the superintendent. It's, it's, it's miraculous that, that, uh, that, that educators and building leads are the only ones who know about it. But then all of a sudden, poof, it turns into, oh, it's this one's kid, it's that one's kid, it's this one's kid, it's that one's kid, it's several kids. Several kids, the same way with several kids last year, but people don't wanna say who their kid is. I will take the lumps for every single person's kid. I will, the reason that so many parents reach out to me, as we've all seen, is because they know I'll never give a kid up. I'll never give a parent up, because as far as I'm concerned, I'll stand in front of those kids and take the lumps for them. Because they're not wrong in saying that the minute that they state that they're not for something for their child or someone else's child, they will have issues. They are not lying when they say that, and that is a disgrace. That is one. Two, federal law. Why is ConnectQuot not following federal law? Why are we not giving surveys to parents and giving transparency? I have never stopped believing in parental choice. That goes for everything, not for some things and not for others. Parental choice. Marisol had said to me, hold on, I wanna, I wanna just, Marisol had said in an email to me that this is the, this is a collegiate, collegiate level class, Jack, and, and I said, what does that mean? So that means that critical race theory is okay, 'cause it's a collegiate level class, college level AP? Well, I'm here to tell you, it's not okay. Had April sent, sent an email showing the syllabus, nobody said that we were against bias. Nobody said that we were against being taught discrimination. Everything should be taught the way it happened. It shouldn't be opinionated, it should be the facts. The facts are that that test was for eighteen and above. The fact is, an educator or educators knew it was eighteen, and I'd like to know who had oversight on this. Was it the director? Was it the principal? Who? Who is supposed to look at these surveys and approve them? Because there's gotta be some sort of quality control. Four years, three surveys have been questioned. Reza, you should know about the one, I don't know if you remember, the one that we got questions about academic freedom? And we won that one. You know why we won that one? 'Cause it shouldn't have been given. They, then, then three years ago, there was a police brutality question they had given in a, in a financial literacy class. Where police brutality should be brought into a financial literacy class. Now, I have the papers. I have these, I have the proof. So when I get emails from people who know nothing, and, and feel that, you know, we're gonna just make up the story, I thank you for doing your due diligence, 'cause no one else did. You did. Saying that it's a college level class doesn't make it okay. This is cri- critical race theory, and I'm here to tell everyone that ConnectQuot has cri- critical race theory. They know they have critical race theory. When they get called down on it, the first thing that happens is the survey comes right down, and everybody blames, I don't know, you, me, both of us, who knows? But I don't really care. The point is, it disappears, poof, it disappeared from the earth, and that's what happened. But it's too bad, we already had it. So my problem is, it disappeared, then a, then a director sends me a link, sends the whole board a link that can't, doesn't work, it doesn't function. Seems really odd. I asked for hard copies, still waiting for the hard copies.
I have them.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I asked for them, just like I asked for textbooks to look at, that supposedly there's textbooks being questioned, but I didn't know anything about it, but I'm sure the district is blaming you or me, mostly me. So at the end of the day, eighteen year olds can't take, eighteen year olds or above, sixteen year olds took it and were told to lie. There is no way, you, I don't care who comes up, who speaks, I don't care what goes on, I'm letting you all know. There is no way to ice over this or sweep it under the rug, okay? No way. Quality control. Who is, who is responsible for the quality control in a classroom? Because ninety-nine percent of the teachers I one hundred percent support, and I know they do the right thing, and you, they should be trusted. But they are still one percenters on every job that, that you gotta worry about quality control. Oversight and quality control.
So I did say that it was a collegiate course. I did say that you have to take the topic as such. But I did look into it, because people were thinking that it was CRT, and I disagree that it is CRT. And, and I, and I did, hold on a second. Hold on. So CRT, the way I interpret it, to, is a framework in the legal and social studies that examines racism and racial disparities that are ingrained in structure and institutions of society, where you try to understand how historically systemic racism continues to affect individuals and communities through the legal process. Where this class was teaching implicit bias, where that's the unconscious attitude or stereotypes that people hold about certain groups that influence their thoughts or behaviors and their decision-making, without them even being aware of it. So those biases can be formed through exposure, through societal stereotypes, through the media, and how it impacts their individuals. So where CRT focuses on analyzing and addressing systemic racism, implicit bias is the subconscious bias that the individuals hold. So I don't believe that CRT is being taught in that class, and they are trying to teach implicit bias. They did use that survey to try to encompass that. Was the survey the best utilized survey? In my opinion, no, because you're asking kids to lie about their age. But to be fair to the instructor, or even the department head at the time, it's a college course, so most kids in college are eighteen. So if they're using a survey to supplement a college course, I don't support having to lie on it. Maybe we could find a different survey, but I do not agree that implicit bias and CRT are the same.
Implicit bias is, is exactly critical race theory. You described critical race theory exactly as it is from the nineties. Yeah, it's exactly what it is. And there were critical race theorists at that time, and one that I've brought up multiple times, Gloria Latsen-Billings. She actually came up with the term of culturally relevant, well, in pedagogy, culturally responsive teaching, all these other terms, which eventually morphed into D E I, diversity, equity, inclusion. And what it is, is, yes, it is meant for college as the legal studies. But there were people such as her who believed this is a great idea for the younger children. So they brought it down into the younger grades, and there are multiple articles from nineteen ninety-five, from all that, but over the years of them making it, uh, in their minds, appropriate. In fact, Gloria Latsen-Billings herself helped develop the New York State Education Department's C R S E, Culturally Responsive Sustaining Educational Framework, that was introduced a number of years ago. We don't necessarily have it. She is on there as an author of that D E I framework. Because ultimately, what it wants to do is, they, they morphed it in where they said, yes, we want students to be academically successful, but we also want them to be agents of social change. So they bank on telling students, you, you don't know that you are racist, but you actually are. So they bank on doing that, and that's where they bring in to, bring all those concepts in about what you said. That's how they, because children, they, they really don't, they're children. So they're not here, they're not in that.
You need to know about the survey.
I tried to take this survey. That they don't know that it's in there. So implicit bias, the unconscious mind, those are exact buzzwords of critical race theory. They, I'm just letting you know, they absolutely are. But again, this is, this is a controversial topic, because it is hard to identify, and I'm not saying that it's not, it absolutely isn't. There are some, like you said, the, the teachers, and I too, support, ba- basically everyone. I mean, we have some incredible educators here, support, administration here. I mean, we have some wonderful people here, and I don't know, I, I can't blame them if, if they're teaching something, because it's literally everywhere. It's in the professional development, that was my concern over the summer with the math.
I got it.
It, it finds its way in there, and we have seen it multiple times over the year, and I'm not, we're seeing it, you know, it happens. But when we see it, we have to say, you know what, we're getting away from age appropriateness, and even more so, when you allow that in, you are allowing politics into the schools. We need to stay in the middle lane, we need to make sure that we focus on academics. And a test like this, the questions alone, take out that says implicit bias, and it's from Project Implicit, why are they asking young students, how, how comfortable are you around African Americans? I mean, that's, I can't even understand asking a child that kind of a question. And so, you know, this is, this, but I understand it, it's, it's an issue. So, you know, this is, but I understand it's an issue, in my opinion. And based on everything I have researched for years, that survey is a direct result of critical race theory. And as you could see, it's actually meant for eighteen and over. It is meant for college-age students. Not meant for younger students, but it was used here.
Well, the thing is too, it's not meant for even an AP class because it's not, April had circled something and said to us that thirteen to seventeen percent it's on the test. It's not on the test. That survey was never on the test.
No, she didn't say the survey. She said the curriculum.
Implicit bias. Here's the thing about implicit bias, that many of you, I guess, don't keep up on. So the survey that was developed by Harvard, a university that recently hit the heart of the Supreme Court decision in June of this year to overturn affirmative action. You guys understand that, right? Therefore, the survey is an extension of implicit bias. It's very important for you guys to understand that the words implicit bias, okay, is using CRT against itself. Just like DEI, which Marisol, you didn't even know what that was. You didn't know what DEI was. You had to have Mrs. Poppy sit down. Can I finish? Can I finish? I let you finish, right? So, Kristi, Mrs. Poppy, Mrs. Poppy, very simply, had no issue with sitting down with you, Liam Lee Kennedy, and you didn't even know that diversity, equity, inclusion curriculum, not separate, cuz that's how our lady said they should be separate, as the curriculum, had biases that you never even knew were there from the New York State Education Department until Mrs. Poppy. You didn't wanna listen to me, but Mrs. Poppy showed you, and you turned to me and said, you're right.
Yeah, they had biases, but I know what DEI is, Jackie.
But you don't know what CRT is, and you never have. You really, you read a definition. You read a definition, holding the meeting together well.
But, so to respond to Jackie DiLorenzo, I think that the challenge that most people have with, that study CRT and try to explain CRT is that in today's society, in today's world, anything that has to do with race gets lumped into CRT, where it, not everything to do with race is CRT.
What was, what do you consider that? Do you think it's okay? Let me ask you, since you're the board president, you could tell us.
Remember, we have a code of conduct.
Do you think that it's okay that a teacher, do you think it's okay that a teacher in our district, any teacher, asked our students to lie about their age? So should we lie about their age? For alcohol too? Should we say that that's okay? What's appropriate? We uphold the code of conduct as board members.
Doctor Senamore, please.
April, please.
Mr. Poppy, no, Doctor Senamore is gonna speak.
Please give me a break.
So I wanted...
No code of conduct this.
Jackie.
So I wanted to give the board an opportunity to discuss with one another this topic. So, a few things to unpack here. The survey itself, it's already acknowledged that a better survey tool could have been utilized. Fine. I appreciate the perspectives that some of these things possibly could be tied to some of these concerns. I appreciate that, but I also think that you then have to get into the soul of the individual to look at the intent behind. And I think that ties directly into the comment about, I think you made it, that the vast majority of the time, the vast majority of our staff are doing, you know, the appropriate thing and making appropriate decisions. It has become, in public education in two thousand and twenty-three, it has become almost impossible for an educator to cover literally anything that has any political connotation. A long time ago, in a galaxy far away, was a social studies teacher, I used to look forward to things like the national election and be able to discuss it with my students. Now, it is, it is almost impossible to try to cover it. And I agree, and you've heard me say for three and a half months, we drive the middle lane, we drive the middle lane. But I also recognize and identify for all of our teachers at all levels and all disciplines how hard it has become to cover these critical topics. A national election that we're thirteen months away from, needs to be covered. And oh boy, as we get closer to that, we know how difficult that's gonna be for our teachers. Topics such as race and prejudice and discrimination, we've all acknowledged, these are appropriate topics in numerous of our curriculums, certainly at an AP level and any of our social stu-, pardon me, at any of our social studies. I want to be solution-focused. There's a tremendous burden placed on public education. Some would argue we're the last standing pillar of society. And we have a very competent, highly competent and experienced staff with a great deal of professionalism. They need our help. When I say our help, when you say, you know, where does, you know, who's accountable for this? Well, it's the superintendent of schools. The buck stops with me. Everything that happens in our classrooms, I am responsible for. However, it's not a micromanagement, and we do have faith in the professionalism of our teachers. They need our support. Who's our? Me, my cabinet, our building administration, our departmental directors. It is not easy to cover these topics, and then we look to design lessons that have engaging activities that help to, you know, to further critical thinking skills and higher-order skill sets as we prepare students for life beyond high school. That's on us to work with our staff collaboratively, collectively. A team educational approach between the administrators and the teachers to help them find and/or develop tools, resources that they could use in the classroom setting. This is a very challenging, you know, this is one of the many very challenging things that we have to cover. And I do appreciate the concerns that are being raised, and no one's, you know, defending certain decisions that were made. But I also wanna be solution-focused and be a supporter and a resource at the same time.
Since you are the lead educator in our district, I'd like to know, is the survey appropriate for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-olds? If it says eighteen or above? Are you going to keep this room under any kind of?
Did you have, you had a question, which everybody has answered so far.
If people are speaking in the public, you're supposed to...
I am handling the meeting.
You're not handling.
I am though.
No, you're not. You're really not.
Did you have a question?
Yes, I have many questions.
Great, ask them.
Okay. I would like to know your opinion as a professional superintendent of this survey for our students. Is it appropriate or inappropriate?
As I previously stated, a better survey tool could have been utilized in this situation. And I recognize the difficulty when it comes to using things like a survey as a tool in a classroom lesson setting. And therefore, you know, we need to help our teachers.
Is it appropriate or inappropriate?
This was not an age-appropriate survey, and we all acknowledge that.
Okay, one. Two, who oversees our teachers in regards to surveys?
You have numerous levels of administration. You have myself and my cabinet. You have...
Where does it go first? How do these surveys get vetted? How does this survey end up in a child's Google or whatever, it's a Google Classroom or whatever it is? How does it land there where parents can't view it, see it? It's like just... I'd like to know, where's the first stop? Who authorizes a teacher or any teacher to use these surveys? And why are we not giving parents the respect to follow federal law?
Let me just clarify that one issue that you're raising with the PPRA. So the PPRA applies to categories of surveys. So not all surveys are gonna be subject to parent review and consent. It's gonna come down to essentially the objective of the survey. So I mean, I'm in a bit of an awkward position because I have not been privy to the survey. I haven't reviewed it, so I don't know what its content is, and I don't know what the objective of the distributor was, right?
Question, what is the objective? What was the objective? Since I was told by multiple students that the objective was, they were told that it's not even an accurate survey by the people giving the survey.
Sir, actually, go ahead, Ms. Poppy, then I'll...
So my understanding is that the survey fits into a larger social psychology unit. And it's the tool or the instrument that the educator selected in order to reach their objective to meet the topic of implicit bias, of teaching toward that topic. So it was a selection in terms of the oversight administratively. We all bear responsibility in that realm. Myself, our building level, and our district-level administrators. I don't know of a situation where, in my experience here, we have collected a plan and reviewed a survey of this type before, to be frank. And so there wasn't a sanctioning of this particular instrument that I think you're getting toward. There wasn't an oversight to say that is, looks like it would be a useful tool or it doesn't look like it would be a useful tool.
Well, can we put an end to using surveys until, temporarily, until we find out what other districts are doing? Cuz I was told that SAGM, I believe it was SAGM, but I could be wrong, but I believe it is SAGM, they have a policy in place where all surveys must be approved by the school board. Now, I'm not really looking for that because I understand that none of the school board members are educators. So I'd like it to be at least approved at the bare minimum by the building principal. There will be accountability for the next survey that goes out. Whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, there will be accountability. Parents have a right to the transparency, and they have a right to accountability. We should never be getting phone calls at eight o'clock in the morning, nine o'clock in the morning because something is going on at the high school that is, that no one even knows about. That then we email and everyone's like, oh, what are you talking about? We don't even know what you're talking about. We can all sit here and pretend that this isn't a terrible survey. But tonight, I will be posting all of the questions online. They will all be for everyone's view. And they should really be posted district-wide. Because everybody should have an opinion on this. I think this, I think people, people who think it's implicit bias and there's no critical race theory in there should really take a look at it. Because those who actually know what critical race theory are will call it what it is.
It's actually very easy to find. Just Google Project Implicit Harvard. You go in, click on it, click take a test. And if you are, you know, interested, there are multiple tests that are the same. There's one about body types, there's one about Asian-Americans, there's one, a political one, there's a religious one. There's about between fifteen and twenty tests that are kind of the same. Pick anyone you want. As long as you're eighteen, you can do it.
And I need to say this. If this was the first one that I've been privy to, I might not be so angry. But this is the third. The third time at the high school level, these surveys have been given out and everybody is just passing the buck. It's someone else's fault, it's everyone's fault. I'm not blaming central office. Nor am I blaming central office. You don't work at the high school level. So I have an issue with that. If something happens in central office, I'm gonna blame central office. And if something happens in, no, I'm serious, in an elementary school, that's who's gonna bear the burden. The burden goes to that school. Three times. Where did the three surveys come from that we had? Three that got polled, three that we won. That we would easily win. The second one, we want academic freedom because it wasn't, they were asking things that are inappropriate. When do we stop? When do we actually say, you know what? Maybe some people need quality control more than others. Maybe we need to do right by our parents. Because that's really what it's about. The parents have a right to know what their kids are learning. To tell our parents, and I wanna tell you something, I ran for this seat telling parents, swearing to them, that as long as I'm sitting here, I will make sure that your children are not being taught critical race theory under any circumstances. And I have now failed. Because it's been taught three times in three different kind of classes, in several classes among that. But in three courses. And I have a problem with that. Obviously, we're not doing anything to stop it.
So my leadership philosophy as superintendent of schools is that everything that happens in the district, I'm responsible for. So I will continue to say that the buck stops with me. I do agree that a classroom lesson survey is not something that warrants, you know, approval at the Board of Education level. But I will also repeat what I said earlier, that administration is here. We're educators. We're, you know, we were in the classroom, we're still teachers. And we're supposed to be teachers of teachers. And so when you're asking about quality control and vetting, that gets back to me saying, administration, that includes central office, building administration. And if there's a departmental director, them as well, to be that, to be that resource to help teachers with tools like this. These are not easy tools to select, certainly very difficult to create. And so that's where the support can come from.
Again, this is number three. This isn't the first time, I know it's your first time with us, but it's number three. So something's gotta change. And I wanna know, Jessie, if you can do me a favor, actually do it as well, and look into, please call SAGM tomorrow, find out what their policy is, and I wanna know how they're doing surveys. Does the Board of Education? And then I wanna know what other school districts are doing with the surveys. If we can't control the quality control three times in, I don't know if it's three or four years, but it's between three or four years, cuz it's three times since I'm on the board, that this has occurred. This has occurred. It's, I want it to be the last time. And someone needs to be accountable. So maybe what it should be is, in every single school in our district, the building principals, no matter what school it is, elementary and all the way up, should be the last stop. That survey should be signed off on by them. And then it should be signed off on by the director of that, of that. They should have ownership of it, to say they knew that that was being done in their class. Because who is doing oversight? Who's doing oversight? I don't understand. In my job, we wear cameras. We wear cameras. And some people didn't like it, and I wasn't really for it. But you wanna know something? It's helped more people than it's hurt. Because you actually see what's really going on. Nobody wants to livestream out of classrooms, I'm not even asking for that. But let's be real here. Where is the accountability? Where is the quality control? If it was the first time, I, you know what? I'd pass. But this is number three. I'm done.
Curriculum review and transparency, Ms. Napolitano Forno.
This is about the social studies books that I knew nothing about. Apparently, we have some social studies books that are being reviewed because of their being too opinionated. I just wanna make this as clear as day. It has not even gotten to the board yet for all of those who are already talking about it, which is another thing that I find entertaining, that I only found out because people were talking about it elsewhere. And I said, oh, this is interesting for me. I cannot stress enough that if I haven't even seen it yet and it's already being polled, I can only imagine how bad some of it is. So before those books make their way onto shelves or make their way anywhere, and this isn't about book banning, this is about, I don't wanna see presidents of the United States, whether it be Obama or Trump, talked about poorly. I wanna see social studies books that actually teach our children, not opinions. I don't really care what someone's opinion is of any of our presidents. I wanna see the facts. Show me the facts. I wanna read a social studies book and go, wow, that happened, I remember that when they were president. It should be fact-based. That's what social studies should be, fact-based. It should not be opinions. When we go into opinions, we go into politics, we go down the rabbit hole, bad.
So I actually haven't seen the books either, Doctor Senamore, do you wanna offer?
Yeah, I do wanna offer. So the board hasn't seen the books yet because we have not brought them forward to the board. There is a textbook review process. It certainly starts with our teachers. And then if there's a departmental director, they get involved, it could be a building principal. And then obviously our curriculum office, and then ultimately, recommendations get made to the Board of Education. So the textbook in question relates to AP US history. And, you know, over the summer, there was an initial book that was selected and upon review, it did, it did come across very opinionated and just a little bit over the top. And so they went back to look at other texts. There's a current text that is still a viable consideration actively under review, that very well could be coming before the board, you know, to be recommended for approval. And if it does come before the board to be recommended for approval, it's because it meets the, and we're talking an AP class, it meets the needs of our students in preparation for the AP assessment. We have some students who may have to take the US History Regents, and so it would help prepare them for that as well. And also, it's the fact that it's, you know, we talk about tools and resources. It is a tool or resource that is used, in this case, by two of our teachers. And they don't even cover every unit in the book. And so, you know, in terms of if there's an opinion here, an opinion there that, you know, maybe wasn't prevalent, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, and now because of, you know, manufacturing companies, some of these are popping in a little bit, you know, there is the ability for the instructor, and this is where, you know, our faith in the instructor to be able to just, you know, keep it straight and narrow down the middle lane in terms of, you know, utilizing the resource. And so they are still going through... And so, they are still going through the vetting process, and, you know, we do wanna bring closure to this pretty soon. And I think there, you know, a statement was made, uh, over the summer, you know, with regards to a different, um, textbook and, and professional development, a different subject area, to have faith in the administration and our recommendation. And, and we have faith in our teachers and how they're going to appropriately use the material.
Thank you. Nothing further from the board? All right, so I will now open the floor for the first public comment portion of the agenda. This public comment portion is for consent agenda items only. An additional public comment period will be held later in the evening. Please raise your hands if you have a comment or a question on a consent agenda item. Okay, so I will call individuals forward one at a time. Please wait for my acknowledgement before stepping to the podium. Any person wishing to address the board shall address the board president only. Comments shall be kept as brief as possible and relate to consent agenda items only. Each person is limited to three minutes for one or more topics. Individual employees, parents, or children should not be identified by name, title, position, grade, or building. The use of foul language and threatening comments will not be tolerated, and the board will consider a recess until order is restored. In accordance with public, with Policy 1230, public comment will not exceed thirty minutes. If there is additional persons wishing to speak, the board may consider a motion to extend the time. I'm just gonna ask you s- to state which item number you're speaking of so we can follow along. So, question number one. Okay, so whoever wants to speak first? Sure. So, the survey would be the second co- uh, public comment?
So, since I'm speaking about both, do I still only have three minutes?
You have three minutes for the consent agenda, and then you'll get three minutes at the second public portion.
So, the first thing I wanna say, Marisol's right on her definition.
For the second.
I'm sorry.
This is, this is for consent agenda items only.
Isn't the survey?
The survey's not on the consent agenda.
And what about the textbook?
Also not.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. No, does anybody else have anything to say about the consent agenda? Okay. So, call for a motion in a second to approve financial matters, items two through four as presented.
Motion.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion in a second to improve, to approve the instructional and non-instructional personnel as presented.
Motion.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Call for a motion in a second to approve items two through thirteen as amended.
Hold on.
I just need a second.
Second.
Any questions? Jackie's looking for something.
Yeah, I was looking for something. It's a red, already, we already approved it. It's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, I will now open the floor for the open public comment portion of the agenda. I will call individuals forward one at a time. Please wait for my acknowledgement before stepping to the podium. You should receive a numbered card from security on your way in. If you have not, please see a security guard in the back of the room. Any person wishing to address the board shall address the board president only. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and relate to school matters only. Each person will be limited to three minutes for one or more topics. Individual employees, parents, or children should not be identified by name, title, position, grade, or building. The use of foul language and threatening comments will not be tolerated, and the board will consider a recess until order is restored. In accordance to Policy 1230, public comment will not exceed thirty minutes. If there are additional persons wishing to speak, the board may consider a motion to extend the time. Number one.
Heard a lot tonight, and there's a few subjects that are gonna piggyback to what I've heard. But first, I'd like to start with the bus policy. There are some bus policies in place already, and there's some difficulty with that. It's our understanding that if there's an issue, whether it's bullying, whether it's the bus not being in proper condition to run, and you have smoke coming into the, the bus, and the children are breathing it in, you know, they're breathing it in, you're to move to the side, pull the bus over in that, and make your correct, you know, notifications to whomever that might be. That's not happening. And that's a policy in place. I can't even tell you when you contact the district, you can fall, fall into something, you know, that we call foil. And I understand foil very clearly, and I understand it and I respect it. However, there has been a board case that has been, from my understanding, an explanation that bus videos and whatever goes on in the bus is not necessarily school records. That could be fought. As parents, we at least should be told consecutively what happened. We're not even given that sometimes. If the video is not being given because it's not falling under FERPA privacy laws, we're being told, in some shape or form, we have to have some kind of notification. It doesn't work for families, you know, when I hear the board, you wanna work together with the community, but it's, it's a hard pill to swallow when you're not giving information. You're said, "Well, you know, you're being told, we'll call that person in, don't worry, we'll handle it." Well, what did you see exactly? "Oh, hard to hear everything, hard to see, I did see your child." So, we wanna work together. And that is the main goal, you know? And, um, I see new positions, I see new faces, and I hope that can be true, and that can be held true. Because I will say that there also are some other things that have come up throughout, which are about 504, and there should be, again, federal protection for children for that. My issue with 504, as a person with special ed credentials, if a child has a 504 and there is an issue, but on that 504, it doesn't indicate that that child has a shadow, if a parent calls the school, and then the child, the way it's handled from administration is that the child is gonna be followed, where other students are telling the child, "Why is that administrator or that educator staring at you like this? How is that helping children?" There's federal protection, from my understanding, and again, I don't know everything, but trying to work together, trying to resolve these things. When we reach out, we want help. We don't wanna make the situation worse for our children. We also, in the past...
Sorry, I'm just gonna need you to, to wrap it up, because you have the three minutes.
Okay. In the past, it was told to us that we could, if granted, go to the, you know, superintendent, and then from there, right to the board, and maybe not use the word appeal, but you wanna have a meeting. It's been neglected in the past. Past board meetings prove that to be true. Um, I'll let that speak for itself. So, you leave parents in a position where we have to seek outside help. I can't even tell you how many parents in 504 within the community, not one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten plus, that have had to seek outside help. As a, as a board, we need to fix this. It's a concern. It's not fair. Why all this stress?
Yes, I, and I agree, and with the new superintendent, and hopefully, things will be different, and we will be working collaboratively. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number two.
Good evening. If we have, uh, trips off Long Island using, uh, coach buses, are we going to require the students, the chaperone, the teacher, the driver to use seatbelts?
Is that your only question?
No, I have more.
I'll let you finish, and then...
I wanna yes or no.
I'll let you finish your, your statements, and then we'll, we'll circle back.
If we do use coach buses, do we have our mechanics check them about for proper inspection, tire condition, and that the driver has a proper CDL? Again, yes or no?
And is that, is that all?
That's enough.
Okay, so I do know the answer to the second question. I know that our mechanics do oversee our buses. Coach buses that are, um, rented or contracted for field trips, they are looked over by our mechanics. I do not know the seatbelt question answered. We will get you that answer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You, you have a reason to.
Yes, a hundred percent.
Safety of our kids.
I know exactly, and that's why I know the answer to the second question.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Number three.
Good evening. Thank you for all your comments, Dr. Senemore and Ms. Mallon, about the survey issue. Uh, it was a topic in my house this week. I have three children who attend school in Connect Quad. Um, I now understand why, uh, the, that somebody had to go into the classroom and disrupt the situation. Um, I'm curious to know more because my understanding is that the chain of command would have involved any parent or student who had a problem going to the teacher, then the department had been approached, then perhaps the principal, and then perhaps Dr. Senemore. Um, but several times throughout my time with my kids in Connect Quad, I hear that somebody complained to a board member, the board member went right to the superintendent, and all of a sudden, without any due process, these things were shut down. Um, I think that's a big problem. I think that we're perhaps letting outside interests and opinions get involved in our kids' education, and that's really concerning to me. Um, but the reason I came up to speak tonight is that I have a student who asked me to read a statement on their behalf about their experience in the AP Psychology class last week. The statement is as follows. "The word 'school' is defined as an institution for educating children as per Oxford. It is extremely difficult to live up to the definition if children are actively being wounded in what they may learn. On October fourth, students were warned of a controversial lesson coming up on the next day, and were told of an alternate assignment that they could take if they were uncomfortable. Taking a controversial lesson was not mandatory, and certainly couldn't be described as indoctrinating. On October fifth, during second period, my AP Psychology teacher was advised not to administer an implicit bias test. This was no BuzzFeed on-source test she was giving out, as it was a studied project put out by Harvard University. My teacher was very clear that the results of this test were not necessarily accurate, and only served," again, we asked about the purpose earlier, "only served to make you think about internalized biases that we all have. Probably good for a kid who's, uh, looking at college-level psychology classes when they're under eighteen. Um, the AP, uh, the terms and ideas showcased in this test during the AP Psychology curriculum, and living in the teacher's ability to teach these topics poses the question, why are we paying ninety-seven dollars for our children to be taught only part of the AP curriculum? With multiple and flexible ways to escape the lesson and countless reassurances of the test inaccuracies, it is very confusing to me, how else one can approach these AP-approved topics? This student is an active asset to your community, with a near-perfect GPA, varsity sports participation, various clubs and honor societies, and is certain to be a success in life after their time in Connect Quad High School. By every measure, this young person is who we're here to spiff. They will add to the statistics to get you funding and accolades for being a good school." So, I, Ms. Mallon again, Dr. Senemore, I appreciate you putting the students first. I hope that we can, uh, stop letting outside interests and opinions come into...
I'm gonna answer you about that.
Hold on, hold on.
About that AP.
Hold on. So, thank you so much for your comments. We do try to tell the community to follow the chain of command as far as, um, any kind of complaints that they should have. I know at times, not everyone follows it, but we try as hard as we can to, um, ask them to do that, and please thank the student for their comments.
Thank you. One, I'm never ever turning a parent away, and I'm glad that you, you don't either. Never will I turn a parent away, because while I've seen firsthand what goes on in Connect Quad, when any student makes any sort of complaint, we've seen how that goes. That's one. Two, let's be very clear on something. Obviously, some people in the audience aren't listening. So, let, let, let me rephrase this for everyone. We have AP...
Jackie, answer the question on to number four.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer myself.
Hold on, hold on, I'm going to...
No, I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask Mrs. Poppy a question. Thank you.
Okay, so ask the question.
So, AP, this was not, and I need it to be reiterated, because obviously, people out there are not hearing, so I want you to just let it, let them know. This was not an AP governed, vetted, curriculum-based, approved survey.
Okay, so we've answered that question, and we're taking up the time of the community's thinking.
Well, I'm asking Mrs. Poppy, and I would like an answer, Marisol. So, I'm sorry, but I would like an answer to that. Mrs. Poppy, I am looking for an answer.
I'm moving on, number four.
Well, I, I'm gonna keep going, Marisol, because unfortunately, I'm...
Then I, then I will have, you're, you're being...
Call the meeting, do whatever you gotta say.
Jackie, you're not letting the meeting continue.
Marisol, somebody in the, somebody in... Somebody in the audience said they do not, said that, said something that is untrue. You're giving other people answers, I wanna give people the correct answers. So, let Mrs. Poppy answer it, as I request.
When the, when the public comment is...
Mrs. Kenny, do you mind her answering really first?
I'm not getting involved.
Mrs. Poppy, can you please answer the public?
Mrs. Poppy, I need for the fifth time tonight, please answer the question.
Okay. The survey in question was not approved by the college board. However, the topic of instruction is a course-approved topic. So, this, the mechanism for reaching the objective of teaching that topic was selected by the instructor, but the instructor was instructing according to a college board-approved course syllabus for the course, which includes...
But this survey will not be on the test. This survey, so if they take the survey, they're gonna take the survey.
This particular survey, to my knowledge, will not necessarily be on the test.
So, we'll help them with their exam, correct?
The, the concept that the instructor...
The survey itself, the specific survey itself, this, if you take it in a vacuum, that survey itself may not necessarily be reflected on the exam.
The instructional topics surrounding this survey will be on the exam.
Thank you, Ms. Poppy.
I'm sorry.
Number four.
If I can, one quick thing, and I, I wish that the parent would have stayed, because I actually wanted to quickly thank her, because in her stating that the survey ultimately served no purpose other than to just kind of put thoughts in the children's heads, that is exactly critical race theory. So, I wanna thank her for bringing that forward as a parent of somebody, that, that the student themselves said that is what it was meant for. That's critical race theory, that's the indoctrination right there.
Okay, anyway, so, moving on. Um, so I just wanna thank, I'm glad that you guys recognized the aides that, um, helped out, because they truly are such a backbone and support for not only the teachers, but genuinely for the students. They know the kids so well, they know the school so well, and, um, so often, they're not really recognized as much, um, for so much that they do, so I'm so grateful for them. I wish they were here, because I really just think that they're just wonderful, um, for our kids, and I'm glad that we have such great ones in our district. Um, thing about BOCs, and we're discussing, um, how, um, some students, we, we fall into that have and have-nots thing when we do BOCs, because parents can't afford the tools for things. Here's a way that might, you might be able to get around this. So, you can't really give anything, because that's a gift of services, and that is against the law, you can't do that. But, you pay a tuition, each district pays a tuition for a child's go-to BOCs. If you wrap their tools that they need into that tuition price, so like if you are going for cosmetology or welding, that might be a way that it might be feasible, because then you're not forcing parents to be like, "I can't really afford it," because a lot of people, I'm gonna tell you, I would never tell this district a darn thing about my financial situation, because there's too much chatter, and it, they make it extremely difficult. I know we say, "Oh, we help kids." I'm gonna tell you, I know families that have gone to the district to ask for help for stuff, and they have literally had to tap dance to get anything, and they genuinely were in dire streets, and nobody should have to do that. And I understand, like, we can't just give out money freely, we're not the Lotto system, but if we just do it across the board, if you wanna go to a BOCs program, let's wrap it in the tuition, you pay tuition for every child that goes to BOCs, every district pays tuition for any child that is in any BOCs program. Put the tools that they need for the program to succeed in that. You provide science in stuff for the science class... You provide science stuff for the science class, which is needed for that class. Those are the tools that those kids need. It's the same thing. If you're in cosmetology, if you're in welding, if you're in computer graphics, there are things you're going to need. We should provide that. It should be part of the tuition. If we could work it that way, then nobody has to go with their cap in their hand, you know, and, and feel any sort of way about it. I think that would be a way we could do it. I don't really do politics up here, but, and this, I'm not looking for this to be political, but with the current world events, I certainly hope that our mental health professionals in our districts are reaching out to families to see if anybody has anybody that was affected with the world, current world events, and that we're supporting those families and those children because we really don't know. We have a diverse community, and we need to be very aware of that. So, I really hope that we're making that the forefront currently, in addition to all the things that we're doing and making sure that that is something that we're prioritizing. The other thing I'd like to also say is that we're administering these mental health surveys. That one-hundred-and-twenty-four question isn't a mental health survey. That's a, that's a health assessment. That is completely different. That's a medical assessment. That's not a health survey. Survey is much smaller. That's a medical assessment. Should not be given in a school unless you are a medical professional. And also, the problem with that is, well, again, we should, parents should be giving consent if they'd like their child to take that or not. But the other thing also is this, and this isn't a negative against the teachers because I think that they're wonderful. Teachers are not trained in trauma response, and they're not trauma-response professionals. So, when you have that type of information being given, and we're doing a lot of this social-emotional learning, which is important, but when you are not trained for certain things and how to respond and how to manage that, you're putting a lot of responsibility on teachers that isn't their burden to bear, and it's simply not appropriate either. And it's, it's unfair. So, I really think we need to evaluate how we're doing this. I mean, I'm, I'm one-hundred percent, you know how I feel about mental health. I've been screaming about it for years. But I really think we need to really hone in and evaluate how we're administering this type of stuff and who is administering it because this could have serious ramifications for staff, for the children, more importantly. You know, we wanna have a well-supported environment. Hmm? Yeah, absolutely. We wanna have a well-supported environment, you know, for everybody involved. And that would, and the proper way to do it, we wanna make sure that we're doing this correctly and having the right professionals do it and not put a burden on, on people who, who shouldn't, who shouldn't. That's just how I feel. Thank you for that. And thank you for the wrapping the tools in with the tuition price idea. That's great. Number five.
Okay, just wanted to start with, I, I do feel like the language we use matters. We use very matter-of-fact statements often from up here about what teachers are saying in classrooms when we're not in those classrooms. So, I think like, obviously, we're aware of what happened, but to say somebody implicitly said, put this date of birth in, or lie those words, if you're not in the classroom, it shouldn't be something that's said that can be entirely damaging to somebody's career. It's just about the way that we word it, I think, is really important. So, that was number one. Number two is, is kind of like the CRT, D E I, implicit bias. Like, this can go in circles all day long. I just feel like we want our kids to have the best chance when they go to college, and like, this is what's being taught. And there's no watered-down version. There is no, you can have an alternative assignment if you don't feel like doing this right now. Like, you're gonna face some of this stuff, and you're gonna have to do it, and then you're gonna have to write a ten-page paper on it later if you wanna go into the psychology realm. So, like, we want to, I think, be careful to not rob the students coming from Kinetquat going into schools and looking and feeling completely lost in comparison to the other kids who are getting taught these things. And the other thing with implicit biases, it's not just race. I feel like that was kind of like, I know the other types of exams were mentioned on here, the surveys, there's like the weight one, the sexuality one, whatever it is. But like, it could be all sorts of things, like, if you have a subconscious dislike for somebody, like maybe, like maybe a school principal, and you try to like blame him for every time a student doesn't flush the toilet, even though it has nothing to do with him, like just because of your own unconscious dislike for that person, that could be an implicit bias. Part of quality control, also, I believe that I trust our district to have human resources staff and, and people who are adequate and they are appropriate to hire people. And that's where our quality control happens, is in the hiring process. So, if we, by this theory of people who are not involved anymore being the ones who are at fault, anyone who hires a teacher that we don't like should then be fired because it falls on them. Box on them, teacher did something they don't like. So, I think quality control happens in the people we trust to hire our educators. I think they have really good educators. I think I turned out to be a pretty intelligent individual, and I learned, I got my education from Kinetquat. Is there something funny about me saying I'm a student?
Please suggest over here, please.
So, also, just wanna throw it out there. I do agree with the thing with the conduct at the sports games. I kind of wanna urge everybody who wants to keep the T-bird. Like, this is kind of the disrespect that people say gets presented when we're talking about the mascot. So, we want to present, if we wanna stay T-birds, we should present as respectful T-birds at games because we want to say that we respect the mascot. The final thing is, I heard code of conduct mentioned, so I looked it up. Who enforces when a board member has a code of conduct violation considering there is a subsection within the code of conduct for the conduct of board members, but there's nothing in the consequences section for when they break it? That's the only group of people.
So, I don't, so it would be, I guess, the board president in connection, connection with legal.
So, the question is who disciplines the board?
So, in our code of...
Over, she is, Jackie, please respect.
In the code of conduct, there is a section that lists the Board of Education and what, what they're attempt, they're supposed to hold to under our code.
Sure.
But then, under consequences, the Board of Education is the only group of people that doesn't have a listing on how that's enforced.
So, I could tell you this. So, the code of conduct is broken down, and you'll...
Excuse me, I can't hear you over somebody disrespectfully speaking while you are.
Okay.
Please, Mr. Spencer, go ahead.
Okay, so essentially, when you look at the code of conduct, it's broken down into what the varying stakeholders' responsibilities are, right, whether it's parents and staff and the board and the superintendent, right? So, it's all broken down in the beginning, and it goes through the various different types of misconduct. So, that piece of it is applicable to, and you'll see, there's caveats in there. It's applicable to students, right? It's a student code of conduct. But you'll also see reference in there to it applying to staff, to a degree, and then also the board, right, and administration and things like that. So, when it comes down to it, there's a portion of the code of conduct that applies to visitors on school grounds, right? And that's what we'd all be treated like right now. So, in terms of the board itself, there are separate due-process proceedings and procedures set forth for the board itself. Typically, that's conducted in terms of whether it's a hearing before the entire board with an independent arbitrator, right, who can sit in as essentially the prosecutor. And then, you also have a mechanism by which there's an appeal to the Commission of Education. So, that's the disciplinary process.
Okay, 'cause I did see the part that said visitors on school grounds. This was under essential partners. So, that's why I wasn't sure why this is...
Right. So, the essential partners piece is just telling everybody what their responsibilities are.
Thank you.
Doug, isn't it, isn't it very difficult? I don't think people understand how difficult it is with board members and the code of conduct because we had this with other board members in the past where we wasted lots of money on, on the arbitrator. How many people have you known that were removed from the school board across New York State?
I think that's a difficult question to answer because ultimately, it's a very fact-specific inquiry, right? So, like anything else, whether it's discipline of a student or discipline of a staff member, discipline of the board is gonna be, depend on what the conduct was. So, in terms of...
Let me ask you an example.
In terms of removal, the standard is gonna be very high because it is an elected official.
Like, that's what I'm saying. I mean, a, a, a board member smiling or laughing, I don't really understand what everybody's code of conduct. There's nothing wrong with a board member being happy or finding something that they find is mistruthful. Next thing, I'm gonna, I'm going to be a happy, happy, very smiley board member.
Thank you. Number six.
I would just like to, if I can, just for one second. I wanna thank you for bringing up the fact of stating that we wanna make sure that we teach the topics. That's exactly what I had stated before. Before I went into the survey, I wanted to state that before my words get twisted to make, make it seem as if I'm trying to say we shouldn't teach racism or discrimination.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens.
You brought a, brought a perfect example of the fact that I was not saying that, and we do need to teach what the students need to learn, which are those topics, and we will continue to teach them. The problem with this survey, and I will stick to it, students were asked to lie about their age. Under no condition is that...
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Thank you. Number six.
Thank you.
By the way, administration didn't deny that happened, just so you know.
Please stop interrupting.
Okay. The definition you presented was the correct definition of critical race theory. Every time somebody yells CRT, multicultural crayons, rap song, bias, this bleep, this bleep.
Jackie, please be disrespectful to the speaker. You're taking, you're taking, nobody, nobody brought up your child. Please be respectful. I think, please give me my time back. Please be respectful to the speaker. No one is bringing up anyone's child.
Go ahead, Marisol, let's see, let's see.
Okay, so, once CRT is being shouted, called upon, blamed, there is a political agenda. It is not the middle of the road. Now, the college, Mr. Palatano, please, stop being disrespectful. Do you have any authority over behavior? That was just...
No, you know what, though? The New York State Board...
I am going to have to, I am going to have to call the meeting. And I will, I'm sorry to Speaker seven, six, seven, and eight because Mr. Palatano has no respect and can't...
This is important.
You can't compose yourself, Jackie. You're taking, no one brought up your child. No one brought up your child or anything.
I knew it was you talking about...
So, please don't, please don't direct yourself to her.
Back to the minutes. The College Board creates the curriculum for all AP courses. Unit nine and unit five and the College Board's AP psych curriculum contains units on bias. Unit five is about cognitive psychology and teaching biases and error in thinking is mandated. Unit nine is entitled psych, social psychology bias. Prejudice and discrimination are required topics. AP courses are designed for students that wish to participate in college-level learning and are afforded the opportunity to use college materials. Harvard University created an implicit bias survey and is used in Harvard's classrooms. The goal of the College Board in certifying an AP class is to make sure the materials are college-level. And talking about parental choice, perhaps a permission slip to participate in college-level surveys. For example, I give permission for my child to participate in college-level materials over his age is young, his maturity level, and wish for academic advancement, necessitate college-level material. Possibility, go on. AP US American Pageant Textbook has been used at Kinetquat for twenty years and approved by the College Board, and it has not yet been approved here. I believe this censorship is based on personal political ideologies. And over thirty years, our superintendent has denied approval of a ready textbook by the Social Studies Department, especially one that's been used for decades.
Please let the rest of us listen.
I spoke with two previous AP teachers from Kinetquat about the American Pageant textbook. One is very conservative and the other very liberal. Neither had a problem or complaint about the book in decades of use. Based on their experience in the AP US American course and exam, both can recommend the textbook American Pageant. There is censorship based on political ideology happening at Kinetquat. The progress far exonerated down. A music teacher cannot use a rap song in a history of music. A content teacher has challenged that certain crayons is promoting social justice. AP US textbooks not approved due to content about the 2016 election in a biasedness survey stopped with the arrival of the superintendent in the building and questions to the teacher by the chairperson. This is censorship by intimidation. The totality of pattern issues with the progressive flag, rap songs, multicultural crayons, nonapproval of an AP textbook, and challenges to an AP psych lesson demonstrate a biased political agenda. Demonstrate a biased political agenda. That is disruptive to student learning.
I'm just going to need you to wrap it up, please.
Okay. Uh, all, all this can be shown to negatively impact the legal rights of district students to receive a good education. I agree, Mr. Spencer, that it is illegal for a board or board members to disrupt student education.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Number seven.
What was that? What was that survey again? 18 and above.
Number seven.
For law, for us to just keep on allowing things that are not age-appropriate. Is everyone like not understanding this?
Mr. Spencer, we're going to move on. Number seven.
People don't understand that
Number eight.
And a FERPA violation can easily have
Number eight. No shouting from the audience, please. No shouting, please. No shouting from the board, no shouting from the audience. Number eight. Go.
So I just want to state that as a parent, I'm diametrically opposed to any type of CRT or anything having to do with it. Having said that, that what was brought up this evening, was this one class, several classes, uh, that's
We're going to let her finish her statement and then
Specific issue. Is there more than one class taught?
Just going to let you finish and then we'll circle back.
That, that's, I, I had that question. I wanted to answer.
Is that your only question?
No.
Well, then continue and we'll, we'll circle back.
Um, I want to know about the grant writers. I want to know about the school trips such as Frost Valley, DC, Mystic, Connecticut, things of that nature. Um, I brought that up before, so I'm just, I want to kind of get an update on that. Um, I'm going to get the last one. Oh, with the housing that you guys were discussing before, um, is there a percentage of that housing that you guys want to write a letter about? Is there any welfare housing in that? I'll get, I'll give you an example. Years ago, I want to say it was about 17 years ago, Triangle Inn was trying to extend their welfare housing rooms. They were getting like $4,500 per room. They'd have like six people in the room. Um, and this was per month. And we had to house those kids, meaning we had to educate them if they wanted to be shipped to Shirley or Riverhead or, you know, Three Village, whatever. That we had to pay for it. So with that housing, I also wanted to know if there's, if any of that was welfare housing. And in fact, do we have a number on how much welfare housing we have in this district to date? Because at the time we had 13. Okay, 13 rooms. That was it. Um, oh, one more thing. Why was just the football field lighted? Why, why didn't we put all of the lights? I mean, I know we have the electric there because I'm not sure how it's done, but we have the billboards and the, I'm sorry, the scoreboards. Why in fact wasn't there lighting put on, let's say, field hockey and soccer and lacrosse fields? Why is it just on the football field? Um, oh, dances in the middle school. When I went to this school, when my son went to this school, there were dances literally every other month. It's something that the kids really enjoyed, all of them, from the, you know, the kind of loners to the super popular kids. All went to these dances, looked forward to them. They were exciting and it was literally one every other month. And it gave these kids something to do. I'm not sure why. It's like one in a blue moon. Want to know who does that? Um, yeah, I just, I kind of need an answer though to the first one with the, with this class, with the CRT. How many classes?
So the particular survey and question today was one class.
It's three, three, three sections, three.
It's one class. There's various sections within the class. As far as the grant writer, we do have a posting up for a grant writer. We're waiting for responses for it. As far as field trips, there are field trips. We just approved two today, one to Florida.
Very specific about these field trips.
I understand. We're probably not revisiting some of those.
Of the middle schools did.
We're not revisiting probably some of those previous field trips that we went to. I, I don't have any information. Um,
Okay, this is two. I, I'd like an answer to that. These are really important.
We will, we will get you an answer. I will have somebody contact you within the next couple of days and get you an answer to your field trip
Okay.
Questions. As far as the Island Hills, I don't have the answer to that.
It wasn't, it's not, um, it, it's absolutely not that kind of, um, development. What they are looking at is actually very high, high-end. They're going to be very high-end and very expensive.
By law, they have to actually have a certain percent of section eight. So there will be a certain percent. If they do not rent the units that they are trying to rent, the, the, the company can go and, um, appeal to get more percent of section
They're not, they're not doing, it's section eight we were there. It's they're doing what they're allowing is they decided the way that they get around it, I'm just telling you, the way they get around it because they did it before these same builders. They're doing on the outskirts, they're doing houses. So like a full circle in houses, if you can picture this, okay? They're going to be one-family houses. That's how they're getting around it. Then the inside, what they're doing is they're doing, um, sections of like, over here would be senior citizens, like how old, like they said, oh, older people who might want to move into a one-bedroom. Then they're going to have two bedrooms, like almost like co-ops and condos. Then they were talking about having the ones that are going to be branched off. They're going to be two, like two condos, I guess, or co-ops where they're, they're, uh, that wouldn't they like
They were saying they were going to have some, like single-family homes.
Actually I have pictures I could check.
Right, other ones that were going to be two stories, three units on each floor and then three stories where there were four units on each floor. So that's how they were getting around, uh, around it that look like homes. They look like ha, just large homes, but they actually have
Essentially, are they paying taxes to cover their children? The children that go in there is my question.
Oh, you know, every, 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 every single unit's going to have taxes. And they also even might try to tell us that they're throwing a bone back to the, to the community by making a community center, which was one thing that wasn't on the last, their last bid when they tried a few years ago and they got denied by the town of Islip. So they, they were saying we're going to have like a community center.
Okay, so I, you didn't really, I want to go back to my first question because I need to clarify because I don't think they understood what I was saying. Um, if there's one person, could it be possible that it's simply that teacher that's doing it? Or is it a part of the curriculum, this, this survey that we're talking about? And in fact, doesn't that fall under personnel? And in fact, if someone's done something wrong, isn't that a personnel item where it would come essentially to you? Instead of bringing it out to the public, okay, because I'm sure it's not hard to find out who it is. Not that I want to do that. But if it's a personnel item, I've been told innumerable times by this Board of Education, we can't discuss it because it's personnel, okay? And if someone's done something wrong, isn't it as simple as writing a letter and putting it in their file? And I'm saying if something was done wrong, okay? And not really understanding how it falls to you or the building principal. We have, we've hired innumerable directors and chair people and or whatever. If there's an issue, can't we just pull that survey? If the person has been warned, then write a letter and put it in the file versus essentially it's personnel.
No, I understand what you're saying. The survey is pulled.
Okay, but it's essentially a personnel item, correct? If someone's done something wrong.
I think that I'm just going to move on to the next person because I'm not going to, I'm not going to discuss personnel. The survey's been, I'm not. The survey's been pulled.
Okay, but it's a personnel item, okay? It shouldn't be discussed at all, okay?
I would agree that it's personnel.
If it is discussed, you can't pull, you can't pull the personnel on us when we're asking questions.
It was a curriculum question.
I believe it was more, I believe it was more
Not when you're saying though.
It was curriculum.
But, but Jackie, not when you're saying very specifically about who, who's responsible for something.
Listen, I know you know better than even me that we, the board, reviews curriculum. We also, and that's what I think some parents don't understand. I know you do understand that, that we review curriculum. So when we have here that something's going on in the classroom, we, our job is not to, and this is what I don't think everyone understands either. It is our job to reach out to a teacher. It's our job to reach out to the
You're really smart. You do get it.
It, it's our job to reach out to, the only person we should be reaching out to is the superintendent. That's, that's the way it goes. The board tells the superintendent, then the superintendent goes down the line. Because we as a board wanted to discuss it as a board discussion because we want it to be made clear to the district for transparency purposes.
I agree with that, okay, about the
Okay, I'm sorry. This can't be a back and forth discussion.
This became a personal agenda, okay? And that's what I'm talking about where it's personnel. It should be
Thank you.
Something in executive session, not after
Number nine.
Only looks like we're going after the principal
Thank you.
Chairs, the teachers.
Thank you so much. Number nine.
Good evening. I have to say, I love coming to the meetings. I find them very entertaining. Um, first things, uh, as far as the BOCs list of materials, can you please make sure you include scrubs on that list? Because many of the students are required to wear scrubs and that can get costly as well. Um, I, I'm just curious to know if the issue, the survey is gross. I'll just, my personal opinion of it. Um, no, we shouldn't be lying about our age to get information. I'm just curious to know if the content was retrieved in a different manner, like say through an essay or a questionnaire type of thing, not a survey, but a questionnaire. Would we be having this conversation? Could we still have the conversation about how it makes you feel when you're around a certain group of people? Or how do you feel about, you know, whatever they want to ask? Because as a student that graduated, that took AP classes, those conversations were so important to her. They were so important to preparing her to be the student that she is today, successful student, um, doing well in her classes around a diverse group of students, which let's be honest, we don't have the diversity here in Kenequa. It's growing. It's getting better. But those conversations are so important. And I think that a better way of getting that information is what the conversation should be, not whether or not we agree about all those acronyms that I'm not going to spell out. But it's important. We need to have that. That's the world we live in. If you turn on the news, you see what's happening. It's a conversation that needs to be had. So thank you for having the conversation because like adults, we should be having it, modeling for the children, the way they should be having their conversations in class. But finding better ways for them to get that information that they can then have the dialogue about. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Just wanted, I, I agree. Those are absolutely conversations that should be had. But that's a conversation typically for the parents. Conversations like that are typically between the parent and the child.
No, please don't shout.
Comes a point where, you know, you, you, you take away the parent's rights to instill whatever belief, whatever it is. There are certain conversations that belong in the home, not in the school.
Can I call for a motion and a second to adjourn the October 10th Board of Education meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Fall in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.